Okay, like to call to work, council meeting Monday, April tenth, two thousand seventeen. Opening prayer, we got some jobs.
Thank you. Good evening, let us pray. Dear Lord, be praying that you will create among us leaders, individuals made in your image, who apply your teachings in their lives and positively impact our families, our workplaces, and our communities. Help us to inspire those with whom we come in contact to share their God-given talents, to do your will, and to find a place in your kingdom where their deepest joy and the world's deepest hungers meet and cry for their special qualities and abilities. Make us leaders, Lord, leaders with strength and courage to follow you, leaders who make your love visible to the world in all our words and actions. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the hall. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
I'm sorry, here.
Thank you, they have a motion to excuse members. So moved?
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only.
All right, thank you for your consideration, they have a motion in the second to approve as presented. Commitment of all meeting minutes, March twentieth seventeenth. Special committee of all meeting minutes, March thirteenth and April third, two thousand seventeen. Council meeting minutes, March thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Special council meeting minutes, April third, two thousand seventeen. Mayor's Court receipts, February two thousand seventeen. Financial statements, February month end reports. And new license for Prebury and North Canton LLC doing business at Prebury seven oh eight, South Main Street, North Canton, Ohio, four four seven two zero.
Most, no question. I don't think so. Most of the stuff has presented now.
Second.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters? Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
And Fontaine?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only.
Thank you very much. And before we start recognition of visitors, if anyone is here to comment regarding the speed limit reduction on Main Street, it is my intention to ask them to leave this table tonight for further review, and we'll leave it at that. So if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address.
Chicago South Federal Southern Prairie Street, Southeast North Canton, Ohio. Before I start out with my main comments, there was a zoning board appeals meeting last week, and is wearing, you were not present.
I kept talking, but I was not.
We can handle, we can talk about them, address that after the meeting.
Well, it's been consistently that the chairman of the Orange Subrals, coaches the DVA, and chairman of the economic office of planning commission.
It doesn't seem that they're charged.
Your law director, I agree, but that's been the pattern for the last sixteen years. By the way, your law director, I guess, had no choice here a few weeks ago at a charter of your commission, he did finally concur, but shall, is a requirement. So I hope he's gonna make that to you. You repeatedly violating the city's charter. All right.
On what?
I'll disagree with that just for a minute.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Governor Mike Max, that's where the cities are here. Okay, last, people heard in last week here, Mayor, I'll talk about the abatement to North British apartments. He said he differed with the interpretation by Mr. Foles. Well, that's really an understatement. You may measure reason for the fact that housing council meeting hasn't been scheduled, is that the schools and development and their target is trying to work out something that is acceptable to both parties. That is why we have set a date for all the appeals that are to be ordered before the city's housing council. I have here a letter that I've had since last Thursday, how the law law director has a relation to you, I'll give it to the mayor here, you can pass it around. His auditor's office, Ohio State Auditor's office, has stated that it is only violates the orders. Further warning, response to the mayor's remarks, you can't negotiate something that was illegal from the beginning. This council, the school, have a fiduciary responsibility to their constituents. Even if the school board negotiates something, as Mr. Fox likes to use the term "abrogational", this was illegal out of the starting date, so you can't negotiate on something that was illegal from the beginning. So if you ask to play your games, negotiate, you can avoid making the city a capital and saying enough, it's illegal, but if people don't come to your census, there will be a lawsuit. How care the schools are going to get rid of fifty percent of that number, there will be a lawsuit. They do not have the authority, nor do you have the authority, to negotiate away your fiduciary responsibilities. Also, last week, Mr. Fox took unreach with Mr. Tripp's remarks, and again, this is the tax review council meeting, I, along with Mr. Tripp, agree that I heard the law director state that any meeting not held on Monday night instantly becomes a special council meeting. So, Mr. Tripp, you're not alone in hearing that. And now, Mr. Fox last night said not only the days of the week, but I guess the very minute it's supposed to be conducted, has to be a special council meeting. Well, last week was the first Monday of the month. You've been a saint from having a special committee of the whole, I had a meeting first, if that would appease the exact hour and minute that the council of the whole should start. The council of the whole lasts ten minutes following, and then you have a special council meeting, why not have that reversed, get a council meeting, commit the whole meeting out of the way, and then have your special council meeting? You're totally using the definition of a special council meeting. You have turned a special council meeting and conducting regular city business at a special council meeting. Many of you could have been here, Mr. Foles, I did miss the train the other day, he said, I know, I'm just trying to draw on, Mr. Peters, you know, those cases, have never functioned that way. And over my time, I surprise everybody our business jumping on again.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Reon, we need a meeting scheduled off the housing council. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Jacob, I was going to address the projection of the speed on Main, and thank you for that comment. I would like to ask if perhaps you as council can ask the chamber to do, which was part of my remarks, to do a survey of the business owners, particularly on that section of Main. I think that that was part of the reason why there was opposition, so if that could be done, and we could get some kind of numbers on the total number of people that are surveyed, and whether they are for or against. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Tripp, one one two seven East Maple. I just kind of stand the same stuff that I touched on last week regarding special meetings. What I did, I already, I already heard it took the years two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, with two thousand and seventeen thrown in just for comparative purposes. In two thousand and ten, there were twenty-nine council meetings, with seven being labeled as special meetings, whereas in two thousand and sixteen, there were twenty-three council meetings, with six being labeled as special. Really not much difference there, other than maybe six less meetings in two thousand and sixteen standing out again. But what became troubling to me was from the first of November to and including last week's meeting, April the third, there had been a total of ten council meetings, with six of them being labeled as special. That's sixty percent. I don't know if this is some kind of trend, but you know, that's pretty uncalled for, sixty percent of special meetings. Ordinance thirty-three thirteen dated May twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, I believe the squad as to the way it has been manipulated to self-serve the personnel of this council and not the needs of the city. In fact, I have the opinion, my remarks, and every public speaker's remarks before and after me are somewhat tainted, because they have not stated, they have read and understand council rules of decorum, courtesy, propriety, and recognition of visitors. Council president, law director, chairwoman of ordinance, rules in claims committee, I don't see the cops here set rules on the podium, but with your own, I've been proceed anywhere. I've always considered city council members as a legislative body. They pass ordinance which would, which would affect the law of the city. For example, ordinance thirty-three thirteen is the law as the city council meeting procedures. Lowering the speed limit, but thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour on certain North Canton city streets become a law. The same would be true of the ordinance where your grass can only be so high, and I could go on, go on. Now, as I said, I consider a council person a lawmaker, and if I said all lawmakers were crooks and criminals, crooks and criminals, you would probably be very upset, perhaps at I am, rightfully so. I know I would. As I watched the video and read the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen meeting, one statement thrown out that really caught my eye. This remark came from Council President Peters in his rebuttal to Mrs. Ballman regarding the pay increase of council members, and I quote, "You know, every lawmaker from top down are a bunch of crooks and criminals." As I said, if I were a lawmaker in any capacity, I would be quite upset at that remark. At the very least, right now, a member of council just interrupt me, ask for a suspension of rules of council, and propose a resolution, do you censor that remark? Again, his, his quote, his remark, "You know, every lawmaker from top down are a bunch of crooks and criminals." It's tough for me to see many bright spots with this city council, but their manipulation of meetings, attendance at meeting, not adherence to city charter, twisting of rules such as advisory, shell, and so forth. But at least I think we see a slight, slight end in the rules now, where the recent addition to what I'm sure Mr. Fox put on the two thousand and seventeen agendas, North Canton city council meets every Monday at seven P.M. in council chambers unless otherwise specified. How many of you knew that was added to the agendas? These are, of course, early words. What the future brains can say these words is the key. Thanks.
Mr. Tripp, that was a flat-out lie.
I didn't.
Flat-out lie. Do you want to see the minutes?
Wow.
Want to see the minutes?
Please.
Please, don't let it froze, stay back.
Okay, I have the minutes, I have the video, it's on the table.
Please have it. On old business, may I have a motion in second to read by title only, the second reading, ordinance number thirty dash seventeen. So moved?
Second.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the second meeting of ordinance thirty-two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance declaring that for traffic control for visits only, portion of Main Street and Zee River, from the intersection of Charlotte Street Northwest, south to the intersection of Paul Street South, shall be known as North Canton's Business District, and as a consequence, the maximum speed limit permitted there on shall be twenty-five miles per hour.
Chair.
So this is the business district that we've been talking about, we passed the first reading last week. A lot of conversation with council members, business owners, and it sounds to me like for this point we should table it, and maybe open up a discussion another time, once we get more development downtown. A lot of businesses aren't for it.
That's motion to table.
So I have a motion, we table it, there's more discussion.
Seventeen.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the ordinance thirty-two thousand and seventeen.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion in the second read by title only, the second reading, ordinance number thirty-one dash seventeen.
Seven.
Second.
Waring?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Peters?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number thirty-five two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance declaring for traffic control for visits only, that because the length of Charlotte Street Northwest within the city of North Canton, from its beginning, the intersection of Orchard and Eurythys, two merger into Orchard and Eurythus, is significantly less than one mile, it is hereby designated not as thorough highway, but as a street, and therefore shall have a maximum speed limit there on twenty-five miles per hour, RC four five one one point two one B and two.
Thank you, Chairman Fontaine.
This is the Hoover District coming across the street, you know, over here on Charlotte. This would be appropriate for a second reading, I'm looking at it.
Second.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the second reading of ordinance thirty-five two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, may I have a motion in second to read by title only, the second reading, ordinance number thirty-two dash seventeen. So moved? Second.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number thirty-two two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance declaring for traffic control for visits only, that because the length of Orchard Street Northwest within the city of North Canton, from its stop, at Charlotte Street Northwest, two stop at Orchard Avenue Northwest, this less than one mile, that portion of Orchard Street Northwest, shall thereby designated not as thorough highway, but as a street, and therefore shall have a maximum speed limit there on twenty-five miles per hour, RC four five one one point two one B and two.
Thank you, Chairman Fontaine.
Okay, so this is really Pittsburgh all the way in, towards Charlotte, and that's the area that we have all that crazy traffic for the type area, and this would be the second reading, we pass this second reading.
Second.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number thirty-two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. On a new business, may I have a motion in the second to read by title only, the first reading, ordinance number thirty-five dash seventeen. Second.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance thirty-five two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance and then North Canton, ordinance number fifty nineteen seventy-seven, specifically section one five nine point zero one, one five nine point zero two, and one five nine point zero three, to put the power of vice code update in the North Canton Republican Convention Code.
Thank you, Chairman Fontaine.
Yes, we talked about this last week, and Pat's been working on this, and just probably retain and keep our records and be known specific with the power of vice code. It didn't matter, I'm not today. Pat, you have anything else?
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Murr, I have to address council. President, you were unavailable, here my own remarks, please.
But I didn't see them.
But I really, I really need to say, it's just part of our document management strategy, and given that, we have certain requirements that are expected of us to meet on a regular basis, and this was bringing into current policy, what has changed over the last nearly forty years, since we've made changes to our rules. So we're in line with the power of vice code, just bringing, who's to be on the committee, Howard, and then the other parts, you'll see later, we're keeping updating the records that we're keeping, making sure that we're getting required, the new types of records that are available, you know, forty years ago, social media didn't exist, so there are a lot of things we need to examine.
Nice job, Ed. Thanks, Ed.
So further discussion, we need to, the second read.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the first reading of ordinance number thirty-five two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion in second to read by title only, the first reading, ordinance number thirty-six dash seventeen. So moved?
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Foles?
Which one?
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Peters?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number thirty-six two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, I wasn't here last week to, to talk about this, but I did see Tim's summary of that, does anyone have any further questions for Tim regarding this? With that, I obtain a motion in second to adopt a first reading, ordinance thirty-six dash seventeen.
So moved?
Second.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the first reading of ordinance number thirty-six two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. May I have a motion in second to read by title only, the first reading, ordinance number thirty-seven dash seventeen. So moved? Second.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number thirty-seven two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance and then ordinance number eight two thousand and seventeen, the two thousand and seventeen sanitary zero grid rehabilitation project in the city of North Canton, increasing the population from non-see four hundred thousand followers to non-see hundred thousand followers, and the same is seen to be encouraged.
Thank you, Chairman.
Rob was kind of shared with us back last, last week that we had the project, and he took some money from, from last year, and we're able to add some dollars for this year, and the project is moving along, anything to add?
Nothing other than basically what the street department decided to add, Green Light Road, southeast of areas of the U.S., and has a hundred thousand dollars.
Perfect, any questions about that? I would like to.
Second.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the first reading of ordinance number thirty-seven two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three readings, ordinance number thirty-seven dash seventeen. So moved?
Second.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Six shifts to suspend the rules of council meeting, ordinance number thirty-seven two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. Finally, motion in second to adopt unsuspension of the rules, ordinance number thirty-seven seventeen. So moved? Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
And Griffith?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt and suspend the rules for ordinance number thirty-seven two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. Motion in the second to read by title only, the first reading, ordinance number thirty-eight dash seventeen. So moved? Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Peters?
Yes.
Six shifts to read by title only, the first reading of ordinance number thirty-two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance and then ordinance number twenty-six two thousand and sixteen, requiring tax agents to clear up regional council of governments delegate to omit the names of individuals and appoint the director of finance and the city delegate, and the joint administration as an alternate delegate.
Thank you, Chairman.
In this case, again, we had, our previous appointment was done individually for the prior finance director, and in this case, we've updated it anyway, so we will employ our representative, her pastime as the finance director, as we talked about last week, so. Laura's almost willing to do it, I guess we shouldn't ask. No, you can choose to accept it, I don't think it's a problem.
Second.
Sir Reddick?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Six shifts to adopt the first reading of ordinance number thirty-two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, reports, remember, okay, important meeting coming up here real soon, this is
zipper-ditch meeting, and since the Civic Center, we're gonna get it, it's gonna be here this time, it'll be in the paper tomorrow, the three hundred and sixty letters that went out, the actual date for the record, I passed out some letters, it's gonna be Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at six P.M. here in Council Chamber, so it's, we're gonna have Kurt Schering and a lot of new representatives, Carter Parks, who are here, he's on the street, the progress remaining, which is really, I recommend, a lot of officials sort of straightening up. The second thing I wanted to say is, it just breaks my heart when I hear him constantly bashing constantly. I know, you know, you guys don't like him, but I'm telling you, the guy is good. He should be here today, because this is your day off. You were off today, you're off tomorrow, you're off yesterday, and you're here for this meeting, and the thing I don't get is, like you answered the phone, anytime I call, pretty much.
And the thing I don't get is, like you answered the phone, anytime I call, pretty much ten o'clock at night to seven-thirty in the morning. And even though that you are very rigid in your rules, I think we're making great progress here with making some positive improvements. It's not gonna be perfect, anytime there's change, people are gonna be frustrated. So I just say, you know, Tim, in my book, I still love you. And I know everybody, they yell at you, but you just hold the line, you're, you're making progress, brother. That's all I have.
I agree. And for anyone to infer anything of patriotism with someone who's served in the military for twenty years, and is one percent of that population, shame on them. So, Tim, we think you're doing a good job, and things on track, thank you. Um, just Mike did a great job this week, helping us all.
Years.
It really was, I mean, it was just nice to, um, have that interaction and to hear all the reports of all different entities. And I know it took a lot, it must have, because you wrote it very well, and it was very thorough, so thank you very much. Uh, Dominic came down with Jim Davis, uh, prior, and then we all got a email from Jim to come down and see the facilities. And I know none of us have taken up on that, so thanks to Jim, and, um, we got to see when all the people left, and we saw trucks, and they were all clean and nice. And I saw the stick handles and, and the snowmobiles, our snowmobiles, trucks, and it was just, it was really neat, uh, to see that had been down there for a while. We love salt, and, uh, I guess that's good, because we have it distributed this year, so we stay on, uh, the expense there. And Jim did a really nice report of, you guys have seen it, but outlined, um, how much it costs the city to salt, you know, per time, the amounts of times. And it was surprising to me that we'd been sold it twenty-four times, because when we think about how many times we all shut up, you know, we need it, you know, three times. So, it was just a good, good beginning, and I appreciate him, reaching out to him. And Laura, that's the other part, these snapshots are just really nice, um, to have, and something that's different, and, uh, I just appreciate that work, you know, they're always easy to come together, but, um, I appreciate it. So, thank you. I agree, that was very helpful, very, very helpful, and I can go down to Jim, so, that's all I have.
Uh, I really want to say a special thank you, Laura, because we've been talking about what we can do. I think city finances are such a, um, frustrating thing, because it's unclear, they're a lot different in the balance sheets of businesses. So even if you've been in business, fund accounting can be very, very different, too. So I think our goal, as we move forward, and I say our, is one of, but she's doing all the groundwork, of course, um, but is to give people some good, uh, fence posts, where you can say, hey, we do really well here, here's some areas differences, here's why it makes difference. So I, I thank the world, everything that she does, in particular, working on this stuff, too, so. Um, I want to say a couple of thank yous, I think the new price parks sign is fantastic, it's really good, very clear, it's very sweet. And the Seven Street projects is becoming all nice, and so, uh, really good there. Another, there are two fronts coming up, our church has our, uh, rent restoration on Saturday, which is neat, I appreciate the police and their assistance with that. And then the Viking Victory run is the twenty-third, and it'll be a big event, I'm sure. And we have a, if someone could get a pool up here tonight, or this stuff, just started, that's gonna pursue.
Is it the empty, uh, lights?
I don't like it, but I want it, right, so if we don't, I'm sorry about that, so we can do that next week. And then state of the city, I don't wish we could.
Oh, yeah, okay, what was the data? There was, it listed.
The state of the city?
Yeah. So that's the twenty-sixth, and that means the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-sixth and the sixth in the, in the union, the state of the city, the city's, huh?
That's what I thought.
You said the sixth, sixth, uh, state of the city, sixth, what you, okay. I'll, you know, move it on the website. Only, uh, just wanted to tack on to that price park sign, and I want to make sure, kudos to Brian, no engineers, Brian done a lot of work in that, too. And it has stayed within our theme and, and, uh, the look of our city, and then, you know, they're, they're moving towards the dogwood signing, too, and it'll be very similar, very cool, classy, so good job. That's all. All of it, all of it, thank you. And I wanted to, uh, come out of Don's, uh, report, I agree with Tim, he's, he's done a great job. Uh, he has given the taxpayer a great service, a massive, a great service. I don't think the everyday citizen realizes just what they're getting for the, um, the money they're spending, it is, it's incredible. Now, I wasn't at last, uh, uh, last week's meeting, but I did see the video, and, and I apologize for getting hooked by, by Larry's nonsense, based on what he said last, uh, last week, I, I should have known. So I, I apologize.
They call it, it's hard to.
Yeah, I guess. Before I move over to this side of, of the tape here, uh, wanted to, uh, make a few comments regarding meetings, special meetings, and, and, and the like. And I've been watching the Charter Review Commission, there, you know, there's a few members on the Charter Review Commission that are, that are very adamant on putting within the charter a, a set schedule. There has been, and there always has been a set schedule, even with the special meetings that we've had, there's been a set schedule. Second, Fourth Monday, we meet legislatively, and, and, and that's that. Uh, with special meetings, you know, I preach to the choir here, but, you know, actually, I preach to the choir out here, too, because most of the people here are, have already formulated a meeting. Uh, but the bottom line is, it allows us to be more responsible to legislative requests. If we get a legislative request a day after a committee meeting, would, if we follow a rigid schedule, we can't talk about that piece for two weeks. Or we can schedule a special committee meeting later on that week, or the following Monday, following the council meeting, and address it in a timely manner. And instead of government moving at a snail's pace, we can be more responsive. It's as simple as that. Uh, and that's the bottom line, is giving the taxpayer better value and a more responsive government, that is it. And I won't sway from that.
Very.
I will not sway from that. In regards to the allegations that we made up here, the conversation I was having with Mary Bob on the floor regarding, um, what was the, the council tag? Is that what it was? The council tag? I don't know what the minutes say, I couldn't quite rate, I couldn't care less, but that, those words would never come out of my mouth, that all politicians, top to bottom, are crooks. You know, I may have been, you know, saying, uh, long, it doesn't matter what it says, it doesn't matter what that says, that's not what I say. So, you know, the bottom line was, you know, it was in the context of that conversation, and, you know, uh, we've reached the, the bottom of the barrel, we're watching videos and just picking at every little word, it's, it's embarrassing. And in your comments last week, I don't, I didn't see anyone up here calling about it, but they were absolutely shameful, shameful, shame on you.
Laura, reports.
Yes, sir, I was gonna touch on special meetings, but I, I think you just, you know, that it's government being fluid, it's not a must schedule. Things happen, or even we, that require, that we have, yes, ma'am.
Well, it just goes to kind of a past work as well, we're looking at the way we keep records, because technology is different. We don't have to wait for the mail, people aren't handling everything, so emailing to us, they're sending it via our phones, we all have these. It's immediate, and government should respond, quite honestly, I think other agencies should look at how we're doing, and be more flexible. I think one of our charter commission members said, listen, you can get online nowadays before you couldn't do that, and look and see what needs are. You can call the council approach, she can send you emails, we're not waiting for a certified letter anywhere. So, that's fluidity, that's moving forward, and we really need to keep doing that as a government that wants to be one of those future cities. I mean, this is just what we need to do.
Exactly, that's what we need, and they respond quickly to a demand.
Yeah.
Mr. Osborne had mentioned a letter from the State Auditor's Office, and called the question why I hadn't shown this to public officials. Well, it arrived today, our mail arrived at City Hall, somewhere between three, four, five, uh, o'clock, depends. But I actually didn't see this until about six P.M., when it came for the council meeting. And from what Mr. Osborne had stated, that we had stated that the auditor's office in this letter stated that the city had done something incorrectly, perhaps committed a crime regarding the North Ridge tax evasion. And actually highlighted this section, and I believe that was the section that was highlighted, and showing that, here it is, the auditor's office is saying that you did something wrong. Normally, for that type of allegation, and then having read the letter, I might say, shame on Mr. Osborne. He completely, one-hundred percent misrepresented what's in his letter. But I believe he simply misread it, and I, I'm not gonna fault him for that. He simply misunderstood what is stated. And we, because he had highlighted, I'll read that part, and you can take your own analysis of this in context of, of what he said. The highlighted portion is, the essence of the complaint, and that's that complaint was filed with the State Auditor's Office regarding the tax exemption for this, the, uh, the North Ridge property. It says the essence of that complaint is that the ordinance went on to specify only three provisions of the revised code, section thirty-seven, thirty-five, point six-seven, as defining the exemption periods. These three provisions do not apply to new residential construction. And the highlighted portion ends there. So I believe he thought this section was critical. And in actuality, if you read it in the context of the sentence that was before it, it's defining what was in the complaint. What he didn't highlight was what is said just after that, which is, this argument may have some traction within the context of a civil action to provoke the abatement. However, the broad language cited above provides that a one-hundred percent tax abatement is available for new construction. This language will defeat any allegation of intent to defraud within the context of a criminal action against the person filing the application for the tax abatement. So that's actually completely the opposite of what he said, but I believe he simply misinterpreted that. So actually, what the auditor's office said based on these allegations was that if reviewed, and it doesn't have jurisdiction for this matter, reverse it to my office, and according to the auditor's office, the, the investigation is closed, so no findings. So, as I said, I'm not gonna fault him for that, I believe he just misread it, but certainly for the record, someone who reads later probably would want to know that, that this guy actually said, he may run you by himself once more.
So, so that's why I like what you do. Do you know how to explain it to any of us?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, one other thing that, uh, I guess wasn't published widely is, a couple of weeks ago, the district court of appeals ruled on the Hoover South parking lot case. I imagine the reason he hadn't brought it up is because the district ruled in favor of the city. So, as far as, uh, its decision, it's ruled in favor of the trial court, the common police court, Stark County, as well as council, as well as the plaintiff's condition. So far as the court of appeals is concerned, that parking lot will remain as a diss. And thank you all for your, your kind comments. That's all, thank you.
Director Finance?
Um, just a couple of thank yous, going back to the ordinance regarding, um, changing the title of the Clearwater Police Union to Utility Specialists. First one, thank, session for Ms. Roberg on that, and that for the servant, and working with myself and the employees. And a thank you to the employees, because they negotiate with us, and, and, you know, hopefully that's the way it should work, is, you know, if they go aside working together to reorganize the department and make things more efficient, so.
I really appreciate, uh, all that, it works. Um, as far as the financial snapshot, I put it for you, I'm glad everybody likes that, appreciate your nice comments. Um, just to highlight a couple of things on there. Um, first box up to talk about, total fund balance, that's total balance of all funds, looking at where we started beginning of the year, where we were at the end of March. You can see there's a pretty significant decrease there. The kind of good news on that is, right at the beginning of April, we received our first half apartment tax settlement, which was about one-point-three million dollars. So that kind of fills that hole for the next several months. Um, the rest of the things on here were things that I kind of keep an eye on, things that I think are interesting. I know government finances is so interesting, but, but these are the things that I look for. Um, some of the things that are kind of beyond our control, like the health insurance claims, that's just depending on how many employees, for the doctor, the dentist, on those types of things, and, and we're doing very well this year so far. Um, income tax collections, of course, is always a big, um, it's a little hard to analyze right now, just because we were self-collecting last year, and now we're agreed it. Income collections are a month behind, because they collect them, and they were admitted to us the next month. So, if you look just a straight first quarter to first quarter, it looks like we're running about even. But when I went back and looked at December, January, February of last year, which would be more comparable, since they're a month behind, um, we're actually about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars ahead of the overall last year. So that's pretty great, um, and that's the trend that we were seeing at the end of last year.
Can you tell if that's because it's likely more, or because incomes are up, and we're collecting more that way?
I believe it's because incomes are up, but it's gonna give us more and more data as we go forward. Yeah, and looking at the, they sent me a report, and one of the top point five taxpayers, and I'm running out of all the system and kind of comparing that, it looks like it's because incomes are up. That's, that's good news. And then the last thing I highlight is down at the bottom, right, the expense tracking. That's where I plan to put any departments that were significantly over budget right now, as compared to where we should be on appropriations. But I didn't find any that were significant, so that's good news. I appreciate all the departments for keeping it under our names, and anything that was above that target were things that were pretty explainable.
Now they know they're gonna be the best. It'll be a red.
I did warn them the last time.
We're not paying for those.
And it might be for a good reason.
Director of Discretion.
And I, just thank you for the kind words on the information, uh, sometimes, uh, our side of the building, we do it day to day, and we forget that, you know, new folks, uh, may not know about it, so we want to put it out, we'll do a better job of, you know, getting that information out. The other issue, I'm pretty sure you know of, but I also want to make sure, is, either side of the building is broke, we all meet all the time. There's, we had a two-hour meeting today between my office and Laura's, uh, there's no place on earth that Tim can hide that he can find me. So, we, we meet continually all the time, and everybody, all my managers, uh, are, you know, have direct access to Laura and Tim and that, too. So, it, it works very well, my, our side of the building, so, thank you.
Uh, yes, I have a few things. Uh, first off, the, uh, I do appreciate the, the council's interest in meeting with the departments, Jim Davis, I know the Dabry, and, uh, and Marcia, I already met with them, and Stephanie also, Marcia will be meeting with them, and Dan has dealt with, I know you all dealt with them on a number of different occasions. But particularly, um, you know, most recently, um, with, with the string town coming up, and, and all those activities, um, you know, what I've learned over the years is that, uh, you've got a lot of analytic personality types that work here in the city government. If you have some information, they'll give you, you know, a lot of detailed analytics, which may not always, you know, be able to make, uh, sense of, uh, without some sort of, you know, explanation. So that's why I think Mike, uh, can be able to review the summary of what's going on in the city. I thought it was great, I loved it. Um, and I, I really positive feedback from all council members, so, very good job on that. Communication makes all the difference. And, uh, and then also, our, our council president, I mean, you know, all of our council members operate with absolute integrity. That's been my personal experience. Every one of the council members have always been honest and straightforward, and truly had a desire to serve the greater good of the city. And, uh, and, you know, I mentioned this before, he was, uh, asked, uh, weekend, uh, you know, how much do I have, uh, trust in our council president? Two of my six kids spent money over his house, so I started with one, and now they keep, like, adding up. So I was like, sure, Mr. Peters, okay, but. I wanted to ask Dad, Mr. Peters, just like, you, is that as good as this, or what? So, um, the good thing is, uh, you know, I really appreciate the work that all the folks do, and the time you're taking to communicate with my friends, and, uh, and also our engineer, Jim Davis, and Pat Deorio, we mix, we'll. Jim Davis, and Pat DeOrio, we mix a little of both of those. And, you know, going back to the CRA, um, Mr. Osborne, you brought up the complaint, and, and I was on the record as stating that, in the beginning when Chuck brought it up, that the CRA, that it could not have been approved, because it didn't go through city council, it didn't go through the school board, and indeed Chuck was right. And, and I remember saying, I don't think you are right, but if you were, that I would try to correct it. And indeed Chuck, you were right, you did uncover it, and, and really what it comes down to is the tax abatement, it's been kind of a controversial thing here in the city, it is in many communities, but, uh, I'll be supporting a tax abatement for the Hoover District. I'd support a, a tax abatement for the Hoover District, because we want to get that project completed. The, the North Ridge, I would not, I do not, I will not, uh, support a tax abatement. However, given the, the ordinance language, it was, it was, it was not clear. And our firm's superintendent granted, granted a 100% property tax abatement, it was nearly three quarters of a million dollars over 12, 13 years, it was a very big property tax abatement. Why wouldn't I support that? Why is it that the council members wouldn't support something like that after speaking with them? It's because we didn't feel that it was necessary to do that, uh, because when you bring residents in, you're not going to collect that associated income tax, usually 40%, at least in the last study, it had been like 40% of the residents pay income tax. We know when we have a job, that, that 100% of those jobs, those individuals will pay income tax. That's why we really love to bring new jobs to the city, because that's guaranteed income, additional revenue to the city. So when we look at the, uh, with Chuck's complaint, because I'm, I'm assuming he didn't say this in the state auditor's letter, but, you know, keep in mind, this was approved by Derek Bowles, our firm's superintendent, exclusively at his discretion. And then it was submitted to Alan Harold, the Stark County auditor. Uh, Alan Harold was a very, very tight ship, he's a very bright man, understands finance, and his office also accepted and approved it. And, uh, so then, uh, I believe, Chuck, I'm assuming that it may have been you, but there was a complaint that was filed with the state auditor, their special task force, their special audit task force, and, and as Tim, our auditorate, already went over, uh, you know, they concluded, number one, it's not their jurisdiction, but they did state in the letter, which is, this is the first time that I've got a copy of the letter, because we didn't give it until this afternoon. But it does say the broad language cited above providing 100% tax abatement is available for new construction, and it says the language will defeat any allegation of intent to defraud within the context of a criminal action against the person filing the application. So in essence, what they're saying is that, yeah, you can look at the ordinance as it's written, and it looks good, and then in the end, you know what they suggest? They refer this special audit task force back to our law director, to give his conclusion on this matter, which he's already doing. So the reason we're not having the housing council, because I know we have members in the audience that have filed a complaint for the housing council, so we didn't hold that, I mean, and keep in mind, the city did file, uh, a, a decision to make clarification on this, but the housing council, we've essentially dropped. Why? Because we know how the language is written, it's, it's not clear, and our goal is to get at least a large portion of the property taxes back, and that's what we're working on. So there's approximately $750,000. It is our hope that we will get a significant portion of that back by working with the schools, because we know that if we were to go and try to get 100% back, which as Mr. Osborne brought up, and that was my original intent, to get 100% back, um, but when you look at the legal system and, and the hospital, we did not think that that was the best structure to go, and so we're working on a, on agreement right now to get a portion, significant portion back, and that's why we haven't held the housing council, uh, meeting, and, but we hope that in the next few weeks, that that will be resolved, and, and it'll be, you know, considering a decision that I did not support, I was opposed to when Chuck brought it to our attention, uh, and we think that that would be the best outcome that we can get, and, and we'll look ahead with that. And, um, so Chuck, thank you for bringing that up, I mean, it was really your, your inquiry that, that brought this to everybody's attention. So I'm glad we did, and, and we're trying to make the best, best out of something that should have been supported, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Director here. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to touch on Price Park for a second. Contractor brought some equipment back today, you know, as the lakes were caused, but we humped down just a few feet deep out of the middle, uh, he's going to get to work on the new algo structure, get that in as part of that project, and also some repairs to the paint wall, and kind of pressure on, we need to get that, then the sidewalk, get that all buttoned up by early June for, for that.
The fishing area? Fishing area?
Exactly.
Okay, fish.
Yeah, it's going to take a little bit of time to build on back up, so, yeah, I'm fishing, and so we're working on that. And I kind of feel a little guilty, this is the first project I've run, yet to ask for a hundred thousand dollars more, so I guess to redeem myself, I'll talk about two, the bid since then, uh, Parkview, we appropriated, we call 600,000, we got a great bid, a little bid, actually awarded, awarded a troll, actually, Central Allied Elementary Schools, about 453,000, so way a bit under there at the time. And then our 2017 meeting, we opened the bids back on the 17th, we just pulled together about $800,000 program, and most of our asphalt was a little bit around 655, and change, so again, about $450,000, so.
I'm glad you announced that, my job, that means a year tonight. Does Parkview come with curbs and divots too?
Parkview with curbs and divots, and it's good, also has a, a median grassy sidewalk.
Robert, any grants, I know that Jim, he enjoyed that process of grant grants, is that something you also enjoy, or everything?
Absolutely, and a lot of the same as, Parkview's engineer for 18 years, a lot of the same sources that Jim used, I used too.
Okay.
So, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Our project's now, their, their grants more.
Okay, thank you.
Do it here as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Disgrace?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is an update in a couple lines, uh, the electronic management, or document and software, the electronic version of everything is starting from old.
Sexy.
Very organized.
I'm anxious to see it.
Look at that, now you can start dealing with it.
Um, digital maybe. We, uh, we're also midway through establishment, or writing the amount of the social media policy, we do a water record up here, I hope soon. One item that I, I do want to send over to council for discussion, uh, is, I hinted about a couple of weeks ago, maintenance to the, this building, the, the front porch, I've had to talk to, and talk to some of you, uh, we have a proposal that could give us some ideas on what the nature of the problems are, how they could be addressed from clean restoration, so I want to forward that over, and maybe then, when we're all here, we can talk about it in depth as to what it is that we see as a problem, what they can do, so then help us identify a solution to the problem.
Do we have any suggestions for the rusty stuff coming through?
That's part of the main.
Yes, we're willing to addressing that in this proposal, and, uh, we're willing to, to forward as part of that, to actually, uh, give us an opportunity to see what we need, as this be paying for, we wanted it, uh, they, they will do a sizable section of that, so the council can view that and decide that that is what you're looking for, and the fact that you want to have with this building, if it is, uh, we'll, we'll identify our way forward for that. They, there, there are experts in it, there's actually some people in the home who suggest that we shouldn't seek them out, and, uh, there are discussions with them, and they feel, uh, that this is not a difficult project, for all the things that they do, uh, this is a, this is an easy task.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Chadler?
Um, two things, last Friday I had my, um, campus promotional exam, and this week until Thursday I have assignments for the chief promotional exam, which I scheduled for Friday evening at my room. And that's it.
Thank you very much. And for everyone's information, our list is scheduled for the rest of the month, next month, next week is a committee meeting on the 17th. There will be no public speaks, we'll be talking about new legislation, or current legislation, and about, and putting it on following week's agenda. To that, the 24th, the fourth month, the fourth week of the month, we are council meeting, we'll have public speaks at this meeting, for those of you that are interested. For those of you who are, two weeks is too long, feel free.
Can you hear me?
Call me on, call my cell number, leave me an asking message. Uh, with that, I'll entertain any questions, if you're.
Tell them.
Sorry? If there's a fan, say aye.
Aye.
Most same side, we are.
Okay. Hey, could you guys hear that, that in the back? Did you hear? Did you hear in the back?
Very good.
Um, some close.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
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 Thank you.